Play.
Miami.
He's never been there. They have stuff.
Yeah, matches.
Cold in Miami, too.
Was it forty degrees? Twenty-five miles. About two more.
Yeah.
All right. You guys ready?
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. Thank you everyone, everyone for coming out. First item on our agenda is our reorganization for 2025. The election of our officers. I'm currently the chairman, Alex is the vice chairman and Tim is the secretary. Uh, what are your thoughts?
Any aspirations? Any aspirations?
Consistency is a good thing.
Somebody make a motion.
Make a motion to continue the current lineup for 2025 with Chris as the chairman, Alex as the vice chairman and Tim as the secretary.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of our December minutes. Any corrections?
I'm fine with Mrs. Stan.
And approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty-fourth.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so we have no no, uh, actions needed for the, uh, plans. No. All right, so we'll get right into our first applicant, uh, lot line adjustment. Come up on a microphone here.
Dennis Litzemberger, I'm representing Lois Gensst. And, uh, pretty simple plan. It's a lot line adjustment for existing buildings that were on the property, but were actually off the property. So our goal is to transfer some land around to make sure they all end up on one property. Lois's property started out with about one point four acres. And we're gonna transfer about a half an acre of land to her existing parcel to make it one point nine acres. And pretty much in compliance with Steve has a letter that we can go over and I have revised waiver request list, Steve, I can give to you also. So that's, that's basically it. If Steve wants to go through the letter, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Got no questions. Um, so you're, you're, you had some existing sheds that were in common property, but not with a dwelling, is that?
Yeah, does everybody have plans?
We have a plan, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there's several, uh, buildings that were used for outside storage, firewood, things like that. And, uh, we just want to encompass it that everything is on Lois's property at this time.
Right? Uh, yeah, if you don't mind running, you guys have any other questions before we run down the letter? Yeah, if you don't mind running through the points on the letter.
Sure. Um, number one is a will comply. That's a drafting item mentioned by Steve. Number two is a waiver request list, and I revised that by adding in the natural resource protection that's not required, uh, because it's just a lot line adjustment. We're not creating any new lots. So that's a will comply. Um, number three setbacks from existing sheds. We will move the one line to make sure that we have twelve foot of clearance, uh, to the shed, which is that's an easy adjustment. So we're willing to comply with that also. And that would just be for the new proposed line, Steve, not the one that's existing on the southeast really part of the property.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that existing non-conforming.
Yep, that's an existing non-conforming. So that's a will comply. Uh, number four is in regards to the existing impervious surface. It was at twelve, um, I think it was twelve percent existing. We're over already. It's not gonna change when we're done. So once again, it's a, uh, existing non-conformity. Uh, natural resource protection calculations, resource mapping, I provide on the waiver request list because it is a lot line change. We actually have set all the property corners out there this time to make sure everything was gonna work out in the field before I came to the meeting. We are asking for a waiver of installing concrete monuments because most of these points end up either on boulders or on solid rock. So that'd be very helpful to get that. Uh, number seven is a will comply. We will write new legal descriptions, uh, for the transfer of the half an acre and then a deed that will include the one point nine total after the conveyance. So that's a will comply. And then number eight are just minor drafting items. Dylan, I'm gonna need a little bit of help with his where the septic system is, so maybe Lois can help me out with that. But other than that, these are all will comply items. And that's basically Steve's letter.
Steve, you have any?
No, it's, it's straightforward. With the revised waiver list. Um, there's really nothing concern on the project.
And you have a revised waiver?
Do now?
All right, uh, you guys have any discussion on this?
There's just one more.
Pretty simple.
What's in our packet?
Yeah, he just added the one for, uh, natural resource.
Gotcha.
And there's no construction. That's why it's not critical to have all the.
Understood.
Steve, would there be any merit in taking the line from the, uh, corner at the back all the way over to the trying to describe it, all the way over to the northeast corner? Like where it cuts back into the back of the property now? Would there be any merit in taking that line diagonally over to the far right rear corner?
I, it's the preference of the owner, how much property they wanna keep with that. How much they wanna merge with the tract of the dwelling and how much they wanna keep with the, uh, we'll call it the estate lot. It's, you know, the
What you're talking about is running this line like this.
Correct.
That'd be up to Lois. You like it the way we have it?
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess the first thing we do is talk about the waiver. I, I have no problem with the waiver request. Johnny, wanna see the revised? It just has the, uh, resource.
All right, and since there's no, no new lots created, the policy is no in lieu of.
I'm good. You good with the, with the waiver request? All right, so all in favor of, um, recommending the waiver request?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'm still that way. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that carries. So you got your waiver requests, so I guess you're looking for a for a preliminary final here?
Yes, please.
Uh, before we do that, any, uh, public comment on the project? Seeing none?
We still need location of the septic system. That would need to be.
So it'll be a conditional.
Yeah, it'd be everything that's in.
Wants to make a a motion for a conditional.
Preliminary. Preliminary. I'll make a motion. Uh, to approve conditional preliminary final approval of the plan.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. You got it.
Good luck.
Good luck. All right. Okay, Durstein Benaya. Or Benaya Durstein. Evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Sean Duffy. I'm the attorney for the applicant, attorney at Obermeyer. With me tonight is Alex Tweedy, who's the projects engineer, along with Zach Durstein of the, the company. Um, I know this was discussed at length at last month's, uh, planning commission meeting. Uh, based on those discussions and based on a meeting with, uh, the township engineer and township manager, we, um, came up with some additional exhibits uh, to try to explore, uh, different, um, items that were discussed at last month's meeting. With that, I'll let Alex Tweedy take it over from here to kind of flesh those things out.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I think we talked about the project in general, um, last month and had a good understanding of the scope. So as noted, there are four exhibits that were provided and I think they're on the board tonight that basically dealt with, uh, three or four high level topics that were asked to review in more detail. One of which was off-site roadway improvements that were, I guess not a condition, but offered to support the waiver from the improvements for Old State Road curbing, sidewalk and widening because of the dead in nature and the no access on Old State. And we also had the waiver for the sidewalk along Meeting House. As part of that and some discussions with township staff and, um, the township engineer. We came up with this plan, which was the township's desire to get some additional widening to Meeting House Road between the Old State Road intersection and the Wawa driveway. If you remember, Wawa is widening from State Road down through their driveway as part of the traffic signal and their entrance improvements. But Meeting House is staying in its existing condition from the Wawa plan from the driveway south to Old State. So in order to offset the waiver request, what we're agreeing to or proposing is that we take Meeting House Road from twenty feet to twenty-four feet from Old State up to the Wawa driveway. And this exhibit basically shows that most of it is four foot widening on the west side, um, at the Wawa driveway down. And then basically when we get to the two barns, um, that's kind of the pinch point. It'll be a slight angle. And then we basically best fit that twenty-four foot in between those two barns and, and come down to the intersection. It works out to be about, you know, one to two feet on one side and two to three on the other side. But we believe that's, you know, addresses the township's concerns about improving the width of that roadway for the full corridor from our driveway all the way up to the traffic light. Um, and then thus offsetting the waiver requests. The second exhibit. I don't know which one. Oh, um, if you go to the second sheet of this, there was just some questions for sightline profiles. There was a lot of conversation about how visible is the truck court, the building, et cetera, from surrounding properties. Um, so this exhibit just shows section A is looking south through the property. Here's the railroad overpass. Or the railroad crossing on Meeting House. But then the front field to the south, as you can see, we best fit in as best we could estimate the height of the existing trees will be preserved along the railroad. And then we talked about how we have a proposed slope. That's the three to one slope that will be planted with material. And then we have the truck bay, you know, the loading dock circulation and then the loading docks themselves. And into the building. And this was discussed at the zoning hearing. I don't know if you guys are not familiar with how the building's structured, but the cold storage warehouse, so the high roof is the actual freezer portion of the building. But then there's a low roof portion. That's the actual loading dock. Um, that's not as tall as the actual freezer box. So that staggered building, the slope of the property and the plantings on the slope as well as the existing, um, railroad vegetation, we think does a nice job of, of screening and buffering. Um, and as we discuss, and we'll get into the revised landscape plan, we're also planting, I mean, we shall one tree, but there's, um, a significant amount of planting on that slope. The only other question, this other exhibit, um, this is the neighbor to the west across Meeting House. As we discussed last month, we had a lot of street trees, which is what the township code preferred along that road. There was a request to change those to evergreens to improve the screening. Um, so those have been switched out. We'll show you the landscape plan in a minute, but that also just shows the sightline of the sunken parking lot. We talked about how the parking and the light holes are sunken below the wall. And, um, some plant material on evergreen screening at the tie into that wall helps soften and shield that, um, both the parking lot and, and the building. So that was that exhibit. And then this is the revised landscape plan. So this, we did two major things based on last month's discussion. We added more evergreens and less street trees like we talked about. And once again, that there was already a waiver request on the balance of street trees and using evergreens as a replacement from street trees. Based on last month's direction and discussion, we went even heavier on evergreens and, and, um, lighter on street trees as part of that. Um, increased the number of Norway spruces, which was a request as well. And then also used more three to one grading to establish some two to three foot berms in specific areas that were requested. On the one area is this area on the southern portion of the driveway, which, you know, would directly screen the loading dock area from Meeting House. And then the other big change was Old State Road originally just had uh, a corridor of typical street trees down the roadway. Um, but we added two to three foot high berms and, um, uh, an undulating fashion along that roadway and then loaded up that area with evergreens instead of street trees because they wanted screening from the building on that side as well. And then once again, Meeting House Road in this area, this is the neighbor that was that second section. Originally had mostly street trees along the road from the landscape provision to the code, but we switched those out and put more evergreens on the top of that wall to help soften that. So there was a, an increase in the evergreens. And once again, that affects the waiver request for the balance of evergreens and shrubs versus the street trees. And then the fourth exhibit. This one. And then the other discussion was concerns about trucks having to idle on the roadway to wait to make a turn in or find, um, loading dock access or, you know, if, if the docks were full and they had to wait, you know, we didn't want there was a concern about trucks sitting on the road waiting to turn in. Um, we had addressed that originally with um, the original plan already had this striped area, which does, and I think we discussed last month, two staging areas for trucks to pull into the property, pull over to the side, go into the office, get their loading dock assignment, get their ticket, wait for a truck to clear whatever would be needed. And then they'd be able to advance in. Um, but there was some concerns about whether or not actually trucks would cross over the center line of the road and create, you know, potential conflicts if a truck was coming in at the same time as it was leaving. Um, so as part of that, we expanded the entrance. We added a one hundred foot long taper, which basically widened the road a little bit more, um, directly adjacent to the driveway to give the truck more room to exit out without being able to for it to be able to stay on the one side of the road. And then we added, a little hard to see, but in right here, there's a, a painted island. So we made that entrance wider. Added a painted median island in the middle so that the two trucks could enter and exit at the same time without any conflicts. Um, what that did result in, once again, it was already a waiver request for the driveway width and the curb line width at the entrance. We still need that waiver, but the larger driveway then increases that waiver. Uh, last month, we were talking about a thirty-five foot driveway with a hundred and twenty foot width at the curb entrance. It is now currently now a fifty foot driveway. It's still a hundred and twenty foot at the curb if you go from the southern curb to the start of the taper. But then in addition, we added that one hundred foot taper to allow that truck to ease back into that roadway. So that affects the, um, entrance design and the associated waiver as well. If we turn back to the landscape plan, which I think was, yeah, this exhibit. Um, prior to this meeting, we did receive an email from the neighbor directed from the south, Mr. Baller, and he had some requests. We had provided this plan for their review at the same time we provided it to the township. There was a request, we have two cherry trees in this lower corner. They asked if we could replace those with Norway spruce instead of, uh, once again, even more evergreens versus the street trees. Uh, we're acceptable to make that change if the township is acceptable to make that change. And then the biggest issue, well, and then they requested that we replace white pines, a I think everyone knows the issue with white pines. I believe the county had the same request. Um, so we're amenable to remove all the white pines and just increase the percentage of the other species we have on the property. The only big request that came out of that that would reflect, reflect the plan is currently we have spruce trees along the top of the slope. And then occasionally we have a street tree or a shade tree. That was intended to have those shade trees there to meet the parking lot shading requirement. As we talked last month, we need a waiver from that because you can't put your traditional parking lot islands in a loading dock and get your shading. So we did try and load up the perimeter where we could with shade trees that would cast some shadow over that loading dock. Um, and then we had the rest with the spruce trees, Norway spruces, as was requested. There was a request or, uh, a question as to whether or not that top side of the slope directly adjacent to the truck parking could be converted to an arborvitae screen that would be more, uh, immediate of a screen, um, while the spruce trees on the slope grow and get their height. An arborvitae screen would be a little bit more immediate and be able to go in a little bit taller and more dense for screening. Um, we don't necessarily have an objection to that. I think our concerns are, one, we would have to remove the spruce trees. We can't add additional trees. That slope's already very densely planted, so it would be trading out the spruce trees for arborvitae. Um, and then there would be a question to the township as to whether or not we would wanna keep the shade trees that produce that little bit of parking lot shading and do arborvitae screens in between or remove all that plant material and just go straight arborvitae across. The only caveat to that and our concern why we didn't propose anything like that originally is we don't believe arborvitae is a tree that's on the recommended tree list on the township code. So we don't, we didn't propose any originally. So I don't know if that would be a waiver or how that would be handled if it was a, you know, non-recommended tree species. So in theory, we're not objectionable to planting it if that's the neighbors and the township's desire, but it, once again, it's a diversion from the code. So those were the main topics from last month that we came up with or addressed.
All right, um, since we're talking about landscaping, then is there any other areas that you have, uh, shading planted or was that the only area that you had in the shading trees?
The, the shading provision applies to both parking lots and loading docks. Uh, the biggest problem is loading docks don't work the same way parking lots do. So for the parking lot, which is on the west side of the building, we have a much more traditional parking lot design that has islands with shade trees, shade trees in the corner and shade trees around the outside. So that gets us pretty good shading provisions for the car parking portion. The loading dock itself is where we had problems. And the only place we can really plant any material that shades that is along this southern edge that would then shade the lower end of that.
Right.
Um, so if we remove those trees and with all evergreens, we would have shading in the car parking lot, but then the um, loading dock would basically be devoid of shading.
Right. Are you doing a white roof on the building?
We are doing white roof and there's some, you know, there's concrete in the loading pad portion. Um, so there's some concrete in there, but the rest of parking, the rest of the loading court is asphalt. But yeah, we did agree to a white roof on the building to offset that, that parking lot shading.
Um, did, did you have any discussion with the neighbors? I know we had talked about you providing planting on their properties or screen.
There was discussion with, who was Mr. Lenz for the left side about trees or planting. Um, Zach, the client had had follow-up conversations and the, my understanding was that they no longer wanted work done on their property, but they wanted us to switch these to evergreens on our side of the property, which we, we made that change.
Steve, what's your thoughts on shading? And, and arborvitae?
Well, they don't meet the shading requirement anyway.
Right.
Right. So I, I think you're better off getting screening that we want for sake of a couple canopy trees that, that would provide shading. If they're getting a waiver, they're asking for a waiver from the shading anyway. The, the arborvitae's and or evergreen trees will provide some shading in some parts of the day. Uh, just not the, the classic, you know, overhanging canopy. So what I have to say about that, you're waiving the, the deal of it anyway. Arborvitae, that's fine. There's provision in the ordinance to allow other types of trees to be approved. I think they are approved as a shrub, not as a tree. But the ordinance gives us leeway to uh, allow any other type of plantings that township you know, are appropriate. The only downside with arborvitae sometimes is, you know, they do tend to die. It'd be a nice green screen for X amount of years and then all of a sudden, you know, a whole chunk of them will.
And we want, we would use the green John arborvitae, which I think hold up a little bit better, but they're still arborvitae and they still, they still have the same.
Now with the concept here of it's not a single row of plantings at the edge of the parking lot. It's going to be the whole slope planted. So even if a few would die over the years, there's
Yeah, it would be.
The other trees on the slope should be, you know, growing up and taller.
Yeah, the idea would be get the arborvitae at the top of the slope for immediate screen. Plant the slope with the spruces and the other plant material. And then if an arborvitae dies in ten years, the spruce trees have ten years of growth to fill in that gap.
Which should, should, you know, compensate.
Did that answer your question?
I forget how much you added.
Well, is there any other discussion on landscape, what we're on this topic?
I don't have any landscaping.
All right, let's go back to road widening. So
I can ask another question about the parking lot. We talked about fencing a lot the last time and it was only fencing on walls.
Yeah, we're doing the fall protection. I saw the walls.
I correct, there's no security fence in the, in the truck parking lot. That can be a six-year. Point in that that would potentially goof up, you know, where your trucks would stop and where they would, you know, be stacking and whatnot.
Yeah, we did some original sketches even before Zach was the tenant to look at guard houses and entrance control, but with the turning movements, it does not really work well on this site.
Right. Okay.
No problem. Thanks. Um, all right, so going back to road widening. So everything's gonna happen on the west side of Meeting House from Old State down to Wawa, correct?
North of the barns, but then when we get to the barns.
Okay.
Then it pivots and it's still majority on the west side. But there are some existing trees at the corner in front of the western house that we wanna stay as far away from as we can. But on the eastern side, there's some utility poles and an existing fence line. So we tried to kind of best fit in the, in the center of that to still get twenty-four feet the best way.
Right.
We could.
Yeah, I think we're still at the concept phase here and this may change a little bit once we get some detail. Because we are close to the buildings, we're close to poles, we're close to trees. And it may not, um, you know, be able to be exactly what was proposed on here. If you, if you look in between those the two barns that we're referring to. On the one side, it's, you know, four and three quarters feet away from the barn. The other side's two and you know, two and a quarter, which is awful close.
Sure is.
And without having, you know, a fully detailed plan to know exactly how, how close that is. And is that actually the wall of the barn? Is there an overhang on the barn? Or I guess that's the shop on that side.
The smaller side.
There's no doors on that side of the barn, is there?
Your answer is, but, I mean, and it may be that we could do something that close if we had protection, if there was some guide rail or something else along that area, but you didn't have the errant truck.
Yeah, potentially. I believe the east side is already, it's not road paving, but I believe it's paved all the way to the barn on the east side, but it's you can tell there's a difference between road paving and like parking lot.
Shoulder, we'll call it. Yeah, there is.
I mean, I, I'm saying that to say this is the concept, and if we could get that detailed plan to work it out, it may have, just acknowledge that it might have to be shifted a little bit and, you know, worst case, we might be talking twenty-two feet to make it, make it work. But more than we have now and more lined up with what Wawa is doing.
Right.
And, uh, fit the circumstances that we, that we have on the road.
So no sidewalks?
It still doesn't have sidewalks.
Right.
Right, we're doing everything we can just to get the road.
The road, the road's tough to fit alone.
Zach has a shuttle bus. She gets employees down the Wawa. That would take everybody safe.
Shuttle bus, wrecker truck, something.
They'll be delivering stuff with drones in ten years.
You guys have any, any questions on the, on the road widening?
That's my, that's my major concern with this is the road widening and, you know, to the, the stop signs, the stop signs are on, there's a stop sign on Meeting House, correct? Is that where the stop signs are?
Currently there's a meeting house, there's stop signs on Meeting House, but Old State is uncontrolled.
Right, right. And then residents talked last time about a blind spot there. So when I, when I drove it, I mean, it's, it's we, we know it needs to be wide, but it's, it's pretty, it's tight, especially with two tractor trailers side by side. Ninety-six, ninety-six. Are they, are they trailers or are they containers? Okay, so. So yeah, we're going to need as we said, as much road as we can, as we can get in there.
And we have to look at that intersection a little bit closer when it's detailed out because we are switching from the, just for ease of discussion, widening on the Wawa side to widening on the warehouse side when you cross the intersection.
They're opposing each other. Yeah, we're widening on the east side, the Wawa's widening on the west side. It's slight outside there.
We do need to look at that closer on a detail, you know, fine detail basis to figure out that best way to transition across that intersection.
Hold your mirrors in.
You know, some of it, we could deal with line striping.
All right. Well, I appreciate the effort.
For sure. And then you haven't, at least you didn't submit with this, the the offset question. Yeah, where this came about was for some of the waivers that you were requesting for.
As far as like the fee breakdowns, you mean?
The actual cost breakdown.
Yeah, we, our understanding was that was more of a board decision as far as the final fee. We wanted to get the waiver and the design concept understood first and then then I think after this meeting or after we get a recommendation, we would have another meeting with, you know, township staff, your office and discuss the, the cost side of it all.
And there's still no sidewalks anywhere like in front of the project or
We are requesting a waiver for Meeting House sidewalk on our front edge.
They're proposing no sidewalks.
Well, they want to have the guy walking out to the corner and say, hey, walk between the two barns.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want to promote pedestrian activity when we don't have sidewalks all the way to Wawa.
To get there, right?
All right.
So there's more questions or I could go back through the waiver list. They're, they're the same waivers as we discussed last month, but there's a little bit more detail and some changes to it this time. But if you want me to, to review the waivers again, I can run through the ones we're seeking.
So we don't have an, an updated waiver request?
It's the same, it's actually the same letter. The waivers didn't change. Just the extent of the waivers changed.
Before we get into the waivers, I, I was just looking down through my notes here. There was one other item that came up last time when we were talking about buffering and noise and that was potential screening or sound continuation for the equipment on the roof.
I believe you did some acoustic studies, right?
Here's a high roof, here's a low roof, lower roof of the dock. We put all of the refrigeration, except for two, all refrigerated below dock. So back towards Old State Road, we're glum, you have the whole building. It's a barrier for all of their units except for two. There's two remaining units. And what we did was on this side of the building, there's a part of it's dry storage, part of it's 35 degrees. We put the dry storage at the back of the building, put the 35 degree at the front. We're for the two units up here closest to the railroad side, furthest from Old State roadside. Those are the two units that are on the roof. The sound studies showed they were between 60 and 70 decibels at I think it was 10 feet. I'm sure you guys want to see it. I think we have about 300 feet to the, the road, 250 or 300 to the road. I was just talking with Bob and he said, I am, I'm also looking to see if I can get a cover put around to help reduce the noise even more. I'm, I'm pretty confident. I do sort of, I think they come that way standard. So not too concerned about that. But the good news is, but the vast majority of the low roof and 70, 60 or 70 decibels, specifically household or conditioner, at 10 or 20 feet. We're going to be 250 feet away from the road. And we next to Route 39 bypass will have the trees as well.
So that, that diagram accurately represents where they're going to be located on the building. There's a bunch of sample locations. That's where you expect them to be on the building.
Down here in the low roof and two units up here. And you know, you only see one here at the angle, but I would be wondering behind that.
And they start at the front end, right? Because they're, they're a loop system. So they're very close to the edge of the start of the freezer. So they're
they're on. As, as Zach noted, they're, they're pushed all the way to the rear of the building from Old State's.
Thank you.
Steve, the noise drops off square the distance.
Sure. Yeah, it sounded. Yeah, it, 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 it goes down. But as with all things that make noise, in the daytime, you don't hear them at night when everything else is quiet.
Right.
Very low decibels, but you're, you know, you're apt to hear it at night. So it's a legitimate concern.
So if, if we're looking at this from the railroad bed, are the units centered on the building? Are they?
Which units?
Any of them.
Well, on the low roof, there's quite a few units there.
Yeah, low roof, they're spread all the way across. On the top roof, there's just two.
There's two and they're not centered. They're on the side closer to Meeting House.
The office portion.
Yeah. So this would be, this is Meeting House Road. So this is probably the two units on the upper roof. We only showed two here, but on the lower roof, there's many more clusters throughout the, the loading dock.
On the low roof that's screened by the, or shielded by the rest of the building.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering about the, the sound going across Meeting House to the Landis property. Sounds like you're far enough away from Old State. How many are on the upper second? Just two. All right. Do I have any questions before we get into the waivers?
I don't.
All right, go ahead. I think, does everybody have a copy? I have my old minutes from last meeting.
Okay. So we, we talked about many of these already, but the first waiver was three code sections, 365, 32D1, 39A and 40A, which are the improvements to Old State Road for cartway widening, sidewalks and curbing. As we discussed, the offset to that would be the, the Wawa site improvements. Similarly, 365, 40A for Meeting House Road, we're doing the roadway improvements. We're offering the widening and the curb, but we're asking for a waiver from the sidewalk. As we discussed, we don't want to promote pedestrian activity with no destination or no safe destination. Then we got into a, a couple of landscape provisions. 365, 41A is small street trees at 30 foot intervals along existing roadways. Like we talked about, there's utility poles and the request for screening versus a street tree approach. So we're requesting a waiver to use different material, i.e. the evergreens for screening versus a typical street tree layout. Next would be 365, 41B, which is the parking area landscape for 35% shading from trees. We talked about that where the loading dock is not a traditional parking layout with islands. Therefore, we have the waiver from the shading. And as we noted, we're offering a white roof on the building and some concrete in the loading court to offset that with the lighter materials. 365, 41G is requiring replacement trees at a minimum of two and a half inch caliper. Once again, this is replacement trees promoting a street tree or a shade tree style tree. We want, obviously, we're putting a lot of plant material on site, which is in the form of evergreens, arborvitae and shrubs. We want to be able to use that plant material as an evergreen to meet the replacement tree criteria, not a traditional two and a half inch caliber street tree. 365, 41H, afforestation to a minimum of 20% base site area. As we talked again, that last month, I think we thought that makes a little bit more sense in an open space criteria in the residential community where you're putting whips or bare, bare root trees in. The landscape plan shows that we are heavily planting this site, especially on the southern slope and along the 309 corridor. If you look at those areas of heavy planting for the screening, that is about 20% of the site area. And though we're not, you know, reforestering it with whips, we think the landscape plan kind of meets the intent of that to have a, a heavy wood, heavy planted portion of the property. 365, 43I is the topsoil removal from the project site. I believe we talked about this last month as well. You know, obviously it's a farm field. There's a lot of topsoil. With the reduced green space after we build the project, we can only put so much topsoil back. Based on last month's discussions, we did add those additional topsoil berms specifically along Old State Road. That'll do some of the additional topsoil, but just due to the volume of topsoil from a historically farmed operation, we still think will be short and I believe we agreed to work with the township on locations if it's needed in township and if we can keep it in the township, but we still are seeking the waiver to be able to remove topsoil from the site. Next would be section 365, 43AMB, which is the four to one slope versus the three to one slope. Once again, we spoke about that last month. And it was this commission's belief that the three to one slope was better if we could get berming out of it. So we did add additional three to one slopes in order to get some berms built into the plan. So we are seeking that waiver still. And I believe there was just a request that we sign a certification that they're designed to be stable, which we would agree to. Next is 365, 49F2C, which is the maximum driveway width, which we talked about. So the code requires 35 foot driveway and 55, four, or 54 feet at the curb line. As we talked now, we're wider than that. We're a 50 foot driveway with 120 foot curb opening and a hundred foot taper. So we would need a wire, we would need a waiver for the driveway width to improve truck circulation. And then the final one is just 35218C, uh, which just speaks to pipe material. We're using concrete within public roadways, but on within the private portion of the site, we request the waiver to be able to use HDP pipe. And that is the extent of the waivers.
Any discussion? I mean, we can. We're going to vote on the waiver. Yeah, we can do that. Is there any public comment on? Before we vote on these waivers, aren't there public comment on waivers? You'd have to come up and speak in the microphone, state your name and an address, please.
Josh Ballmer, Ballmer Farms is just below the tracks there and my dad's unable to be here and I'm township line road, so I can see the spot from my bedroom. And I hear fresco inside my house. I don't know what the fresco decibels are, but I can hear them operating inside my bedroom at night. That was a good point. I think that there's going to be great neighbors. I like Zach and Kara, so I'm supportive of them and local business. I just had a couple of questions because our trucks go up and down that road and just wanted to make sure that the township does take care of that intersection and we'd recommend a four-way stop because it is when you're coming through there with a tractor trailer or even a straight truck. It's not the best direction and Bob would know better than us because he's right on the corner. But good drivers can do a great job, but when you have a truck coming through, it would be nice to have that wider. And I agree, no sidewalk. That makes sense to me not to have sidewalks there. The view is night, is helpful, but we don't stand in the valley. We stand, we don't stand at the bottom of the field. We stand across the valley at, my grandparents are from my house. So I appreciate Zach's been so open and helpful right from the beginning and I, we like those tree accommodations. So thanks Zach for working that out. And then my dad appreciated what you even emailed back today. So he's going to be a good neighbor. We feel good about that. I was at the original zoning hearing board when the variance was given for the first height variance was, which was before you Zach. And they've had in there about the screening was necessary from our properties there to the south. So I appreciate that Zach's upheld that. And I know the variance is even higher now, but I think that's all I wanted to say. Just, I was curious about the widening of the road down from Old State to your driveway or the railroad tracks, just confirming what that width is on your side. And yeah, ask, if there's an ability to make a four-way at the stop, four-way stop at the top. I think that would be beneficial to his drivers and every, safer for everybody on that road. I, I don't know how Bob feels about that, but that's what we would like to see.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks.
With the road widening stuff, when that becomes more defined, I, I would assume would I be involved with that? Certainly my, my abilities are going to pass.
Yes, I would assume if you. Who, uh, who takes care of four-way stops?
We'd have to look into it. There, it's easy to say install a four-way stop. It's not easy to legally install a four-way stop that's technically enforceable by the, by the police. But I'll discuss it with the traffic engineer. And, and potentially because of site distance, those concerns and the trucks may be able to justify it.
All right. Any discussion on the waivers? I, I really, I think the waivers are fine, the way they've been remedied, I guess, to request a waiver. So I'm, I'm fine with, with all the waiver requests.
Yeah, I have no problems with that.
Okay.
I was going to say, I mean, I think there's, there's a level of practicality and I, I think they've gone a great lens to try to come as close as they can, but still offer practical solutions to the, to the areas where they're not.
Well said. Thank you. That being said, we want to vote on making a recommendation.
I'll make the motion. I'll second. Go ahead, John.
We'll give that to John. All right. All in favor?
I, I oppose.
All right. So we're going to recommend the waiver requests. What else would you like to do tonight?
Uh, we, we're seeking a preliminary, uh, plan approval to move forward with the project.
Is there any reason not to get in with preliminary tonight?
Boded question.
What do we have outstanding?
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I think when we went through the whole rest of the letter last time, you know, the real issues were the waiver issues.
Right.
There, there's still an outstanding issue related to whether there should or shouldn't be a contribution towards the traffic signal. That's an issue for the board of supervisors, not for you. Just looking back to my notes here.
I mean, the road widening is what it can be. Right?
Yeah. Right. That's sort of a, you can definitely prove it on that we could work it out generally based on the concept that they.
Right.
No, I don't, I don't have any other significant items. Obviously they have all their outside approvals to hit.
Right.
And PDS permits, another, another permits. And you, you, you've been to or have submitted plans to help a borough authority.
One minor change.
So we're looking for conditional preliminary. So we're looking for conditional preliminary? Somebody want to make that motion? Nobody wants to.
So conditional preliminary final.
Not final.
Just preliminary.
They asked for.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
I opposed. I've carries.
Thank you.
There you go. Keep the ball rolling.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Good night. Good night.
See you guys. All right, so next on the agenda would be old business. I don't have any old business. I ain't new business. I have none.
I'll just report, there, there's more stuff coming your way.
Okay.
Actually goofed up the list because two of them I didn't, one of them I didn't get on here. Excuse me. Select properties submitted a bunch of plans right before Christmas that were late or, you know, this week.
Right.
But they're coming in with a minor subdivision for the Fisher track. That's where the sewage treatment plant is going for the lawn avenue subdivision.
All right.
So that originally, that splitting this Fisher track was shown on the overall subdivision plan. Now they're submitting a minor subdivision plan to just get that subdivision done with. So you'll see, you'll see that.
Just clarify, that's a pump station, not a treatment.
I'm sorry. Yes, it's a pump station. Didn't mean to scare anyone. We also received the sketch plan for the other corner of Lawn and Ridge Road. The property they own behind, behind the restaurant and back there by the ramps. So what's that forty-three unit townhouse that's more or less laid out like the other side, the triangular piece that we looked at, you know, a year ago. It has an entrance road off of Lawn Avenue, you know, a loop road in the middle with the townhouses and then goes back out to Ridge Road. So you'll see that sketch plan. They're calling that Almont Properties.
To Ridge Road where? Like between the restaurant and lawn?
Yeah, closer to the restaurant, some driveway in there that they own that they're coming out. And that repair guy, we're meeting with him next week. He, he's trying to pin the, us, the township down on what the road improvements are gonna be before he buys the property. It's like, we don't have a plan.
Far, the one at Forest there?
The one at Forest, yeah. And we're gonna talk to him. I, he may come to your next meeting.
There's no Bethlehem we were talking about crossing the, I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they went there to do the maintenance or the appliance installers from big box stores.
What's, what's going on there?
They're trying to get township staff to pin down what their road improvement requirements are gonna be before they move through with the plan. But it's hard to get them specific answer when we don't have a plan.
Right.
You know, so it's a chicken in the egg. We're working with them. I think those are the, the major items that are coming back. Augustine Road, that's seems to be on hold. I think they told me they're not gonna come back until they get their NPS permit. But you will certainly see more of select properties in the next couple of months.
And they were, weren't they supposed to go to zoning hearing with the property out by the Wombel Forum there?
Yeah, they own that. Again, it's a triangular piece.
Yeah.
They're trying to get a zoning variance to get three frontage lots instead of, they originally proposed like two frontage lots and a side block. But they, they withdrew themselves from the meeting. And they didn't withdraw their application, but they asked to be, you know, deferred from the zoning hearing that was scheduled. So I think it's scheduled in more. Yeah, so it just got pushed back. But that's for what it's worth, separate from all of the.
Right, right.
All the other developments. It happens to have sewer right in front of it now, water right in front of it. That's the biggest no-brainer of them all. Holiday House Road, we haven't heard back on Holiday House Road, so that's, that's in the book.
So with the two projects, they're in original lawn avenue, forty-three houses on one side, twenty-five on the other side. Rammed up against the entrance to three oh nine in a busy intersection. What triggers some holistic view of the traffic flow for?
We've been asking for that with every plan. We haven't.
Right, but if you look at them individually, you might get a different answer than if you lump them all together and say, what's the, what's the ultimate picture gonna look like? Because that intersection gets to be a mess already.
Yeah.
And with these developments where it's gonna be like a ridge road, so it's gonna be like two left-hand turns to get to three oh nine, whether you're coming or going.
John, the traffic circle fix all of that.
It was discussed in the. Shimment there a circle. Yeah, what's your, what's your name and address, please?
Joanne Vian. I live one second house over from Lawn Avenue and Ridge Road.
Okay.
On the ridge.
Yep.
And you have feelings with select properties already. They are far ordered from my back, from my garages and on the side, they love that lot next to me. And you're talking, you're gonna build, they wanna build behind me now too?
Yes.
That's great. That's like swamp. You know that, right? And that intersection can't handle any, they can't handle what you're planning, what they're planning to do now. I have these when I can't hardly get out of my driveway because of traffic.
That's definitely concerning to township. The, the township did have our traffic consultant do a cursory look of, you know, a holistic improvement to that intersection in it, in anticipation of these developments coming in. But at this point, we're still pushing select properties to get on board of looking at all three of their developments together and not as individual.
Right.
What is supposed to notify the neighbors when they're proposing something like this? I got one for the Lawn Avenue, one on the other side, but not behind me.
They do, when they do their full plan submission, when they just come in with a sketch plan, which is just for discussion, it's not formal submission. They don't have to notify all the neighbors and that's what they have for the property behind. But it probably will be discussed at next month's meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, how does that handle though? I mean, that property there is like that gap between, I think, our house, the second house and then the next house going towards the restaurant, like on the south side. I mean, that's all like weeds and, you know. I mean, it's gotta be wetlands, right? In there? Is that dominated wetlands there or how like?
I, I don't know. I, I just don't want to take a, you know, take a guess.
That'll be part of their submission.
Yeah, but I mean, the back part's even lower.
Oh, I disagree. I'm just saying that, that it's something they'll have to.
Right.
Submit and we could request a Army Corps determination.
Probably was gonna happen because they'll have John Sopanski do the report. He rarely finds wetlands anywhere, ever. Sometimes the Army agrees with them and sometimes they don't. Yeah, that's all yet to be, yet to be worked out. But they have, on any of their projects have yet to open the discussion with PennDOT either. You know, we said, we need to have, they refer to them as a scoping meeting. It's sort of like a sketch plan meeting with PennDOT, the township and the developer. They, you know, here's our concept, what, you know, our PennDOT's initial thoughts of this. And that hasn't happened yet either. And with, you know, ridge and lawn, at least, you know, the part of lawn, I call it south of the ridge being a state road, you know, they'll be involved in all three of those projects.
And I'm assuming that's gonna be public sewer there as well, right?
Yeah.
Forty-three townhouse.
You're anticipating public sewer.
Saying a mountain and a wetland.
Yeah, well, I think once again, we just, we're seeing a shoe on getting us, how are they gonna tie all this together in the?
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, the manager has told them, the planning commission doesn't want to review it till we know how sewer is gonna work. Which works for their preliminary plan, not for the sketch plan.
Right.
You know, so you'll need to entertain them for discussion, which is actually a good thing because it'll give you a chance to make all these comments to them.
Right.
Are you concerned with traffic, wetlands? Et cetera, et cetera.
All righty then.
So there's several things on the horizon. Whether they all come, eat wet once or they trickle in over a couple of months, you never know.
Anything more for Butter Creek?
They're working through.
Issues. Some permit issues.
And, and PDS permit and sewer planning, I think. I've seen a lot of emails back and forth. But he is pursuing that reduced scope plan, no road, just a bunch of frontage lots and black.
When are they starting the pipe, the wear pipe project?
The boring under three oh nine will be starting a new day now. And that'll be, you know, they, they hope to get that part done over the winter. And by spring or early spring, then ready to start the transmission line work.
Where are they gonna start? You start thinking that I'm gonna head that way?
You know, I don't remember.
So there's all kinds of orange markets, which is like communications that will have the intersection there with Bridge Valley and, and Ridge. That, what is that?
If they did a PA one call and everybody has underground, has to mark out what they have, so it should be markings up and down, all up and down the ridge.
Are they gonna shut that down one side only or?
No, I mean Ridge Road, the detour, Ridge Road will be closed during daytime hours. Open the local traffic, buses and emergency vehicles only. So there'll be a permanent truck detour, there'll be a daily car detour and at night Ridge Road will be open to traffic.
That should be interesting.
And weekends still will be open, so it'll only be closed the hours that work, but yeah, they're not keeping one lane.
They should do it the other way. During the day.
No. The schedule on your refrigerator.
Theoretically should go faster, you know, if anybody has a remembrance of the sewer project down here that was forever. But that was a sewer project. They were in rock, much shallower waterland project. It should progress much smoother and faster than, than the sewer project did, although it is a long run, so.
What size is the main they're putting in?
I think it's twelve, but I really don't remember.
Well, how about that Circle Drive project sewer?
I'm not sure where that stands. They, they got their planning approval through DEP. I don't know where it stands as far as contracting and actually getting other construction.
Right.
But it was a go project.
Right. Yeah, well, they need it.
Yeah, that'll be a big, big change.
Public comment? Already made it?
John, didn't you ask a while ago about select properties, primarily drawing in that had all the stuff that they were doing on Lawn Avenue, that whole area? Because the, the, the old airfield, that's select properties too, isn't it? Do I remember? Didn't, didn't, didn't you ask for them to come in with a plan of all those projects put together with?
I probably did, yeah. I, I think it was in light of, we asked for them to show us how they're doing the sewer for all their projects because they were all interconnected in one way and how they're doing the traffic for all the projects. Not necessarily to see all the projects on one, on one plan.
But I'm sure that hasn't been talked about, right?
No, no.
I haven't seen that.
Not in a meeting.
It'd be nice to, it'd be nice to see it all together. Like John said, it's like you're looking at one piece, one piece, one piece, but put it all together. It's a big puzzle.
Trust me, I haven't forgotten about that.
No. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'd look to get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion. Second.
All in favor?
I.
What carries? Thank you, everyone.